Good evening, like to call to order the July eleventh meeting of the Norwalk Common Council. If you'll please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to the nation's flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
Under God.
Thank you all. Nicole has arrived, so Clark, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Burnett.
Present.
Mr. Camacho.
Present.
Mr. Goldstein.
Present.
Ms. Najolski-Eichner.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Ayers.
Present.
Mr. Huberman.
Present.
Ms. Revellus.
Present.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Mr. Kites.
Here.
Ms. McMur.
Present.
Ms. Alterman. Mr. Meek.
Here.
Ms. Shanahan. Mr. Frayer.
Here.
Ms. Alterman. Ms. Shanahan. We have thirteen, we have a quorum.
Thirteen present, we have a quorum, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes of the special meeting of June twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, do I have a motion? Mr. Hooverman, any corrections, omissions, deletions? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as submitted? Opposed? Abstentions?
One abstention.
I'm sorry, my apologies, I couldn't hear properly, is this for the reg- the special meeting or the regular meeting?
Special meeting of June twentieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, so if I see the, see it right, Mr. Meek and Mr. Frayer are abstaining, and I am too, and Mr. Camacho. And there is anyone opposed? No one opposed, motion carries, thank you. Next item on the agenda, regular meeting, acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, do I have a motion? Ms. McMur. Any corrections, deletions, or omissions? Seeing no hands and all in favor of approving the minutes as submitted? Opposed? And abstentions?
Abstention.
Mr. Camacho is abstaining.
Mr. G.
Nora and I do as well.
Oh, Nora's abstaining as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Meek is abstaining and Mr. Goldstein. Okay, so next item on the agenda is public participation, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the council? Is there anybody virtually that would like to address the council?
Yes, we have Lynell Jones.
Okay.
Please keep your comments to around three minutes and play, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Lynell Jones, my address is Ten Point Road. Tonight, I'm here to ask that you do not authorize the mayor to approve the waterfront industrial zone study. This study is in complete opposition to what the Connecticut Institute for Resilience and Climate Adaptation, CIRCA, is telling city leaders about preparing for climate change. You have no choice but to think about stormwater management now that ten to twenty inches of rain can fall within hours anywhere. I'm who found and shared the unexpected expensive consent decree that the mayor had to sign with deep for combined sewer and stormwater outflows. This decree was kept very quiet, and I'm who shared it with the Health Department and the mayor's Water Quality Committee, both of which were stunned that it was not shared with them by the mayor's office, why? Expensive, very expensive, and very embarrassing. Equally embarrassing is the city's annual stormwater management plan required by our MS four permit from deep, which is not an iterative process as required. Are any of you familiar with the lawsuit deep filed against the city of Norwalk in violation of their municipal coastal agreement in nineteen eighty-nine? This suit was filed to stop the increase of density on Water Street. So what has changed from storms dropping more water and tides rising? Do you want more lawsuits? Did you know that if you make a bad decision, you and the city can be sued for creating public nuisances? Ask CIRCA. The waterfront industrial zone study done by an expensive hired consultant, UTILE, does not fully address stormwater. And when I asked why not, the consultant told me the city directed them to address increasing density near the train station, to not address stormwater management, stormwater infrastructure. They were asked to make a case for increasing density, and they did. The slick report, one hundred and eighty-seven pages, is skillfully evasive. Addressing stormwater management would have included the need to improve infrastructure, raise roads three to four feet in critical areas, exactly what the city has heard from CIRCA. CIRCA, the Connecticut Institute for Resilience and Climate Adaptation, part of Yukon, is federally funded and unbiased. CIRCA identified South Norwalk, the exact area this study looks to increase density in, as one of the most vulnerable in all of Connecticut. Today, the CIRCA director explained to me that he cannot require Norwalk to do anything, but pointed out the advice already given to raise critical roads four feet in coastal flood zones like the Water Street, exactly this area should be obvious. I'm gonna finish.
Thank you.
I remember the look of shock on Tom Livingston's normally stone face when he heard this from CIRCA and his words, has anyone told Rowayton? Table this item, and please review the unbiased CIRCA research and recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Shermansey, is there anybody else?
If anyone else would like to address the council, please raise your hand electronically.
Okay, with that, we will close public participation. There is no, there are no resignations or appointment, no resignations. There are several appointments, the first one being Christopher White to the Harbor Management Commission, do I have a motion? Ms. Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, I would like to move the appointment of Christopher White. Mr. White is an expert in marketing and brand development, he's most recently headed up a couple of companies here in Norwalk, the Creative Group and White Squaw Creative, working in content and creative services as well as editor in chief. He has a long history of working locally, but also is clearly a boating enthusiast. He has been senior editor at Sail Magazine out of Boston, Power and Motor Yacht, and Angler's Journal in Essex, and also Yachting Magazine in Newport, Rhode Island. So clearly knows his way around the water and harbors, and so we are grateful that he is stepping up to serve, and I support his appointment.
Thank you, any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor of appointing Mr. Christopher White to the Harbor Management Commission? Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next, we have several people that are going to be appointed to the Arts and Cultural Commission. We have Stephen Rust, Nan Gruden, Naomi Clark, Ava Jacobs, Melissa Metuska, Bob Ribble, Brian Casper, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses tonight, Nanny Loftus George, and Mark Allen. We have a motion to appoint those individuals.
Mayor, I'd like to make that motion.
Ms. Najolski-Eichner?
Thank you, Mayor, so I want to express the, my gratitude and the gratitude of the council for all of these individuals who are stepping up to be members of our newly reformed Arts and Cultural Commission. So as you all may recall, we recently passed a new ordinance creating the Arts and Cultural District here in Norwalk, which runs from Wall Street through West Avenue and down into Sono, and is intended to really highlight the incredible diversity and strength of Norwalk's arts offerings. And I think our, this new commission and the members on it really embody that diversity and that strength. We have sound engineers, lighting designers, musicians, singers, dancers, visual artists, and they come from institutions like the Norwalk Conservatory of the Arts and Factory Underground, which are anchoring this Arts and Cultural District. So I really want to express our gratitude to all of these members and move their nomination for this exciting new version of the Arts and Cultural Commission, which I think will bring tremendous value to the city of Norwalk.
Thank you, Ms. Najolski-Eichner, is there any further comment? Ms. Smith?
Yes, I'd just like to thank all of the members who are being appointed to the Arts and Cultural Commission, but I would just like to say a few personal words about Mark Allen, who's here tonight. Mark has been on the Arts Commission for quite a long time, has been a real advocate for arts throughout the city, but particularly in the Wall Street area, and you know, very involved with Factory Underground, Wall Street Theater. So he's, he's a real public servant along with all the other work that he does, so, so just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Further comments or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Allen, for your willingness to continue on. So next, we have the mayor's comments, I just have a couple. One is that we're extremely grateful to our federal delegation, most especially Congressman Himes, for procuring four point five million dollars for the Norwalk River Valley Trail. It's a thirty mile trail that's gonna stretch from Cat Pasture Beach all the way up to, what is it, Richter Park? In Danbury, I believe it's not Richter Park, it's.
Rogers.
Rogers Park, thank you, in Danbury, as the place said, if you haven't seen some of the parts that are already completed, it would be great to go out and take a look at them. It would be, provide an opportunity for people to ride bikes, walk, run, jog, bring their children, walk their dogs. It's gonna be the longest trail in, in Connecticut, I believe. So it's really exciting that we're getting that, getting it done. This past weekend, I went to the Norwalk Meal Blitz that we had over at Norwalk High School. During the summertime, our young people are oftentimes without proper nutrition. And these, this group, the Norwalk Public Schools, Chartwell, and, and the Norwalk Health Department, we got together and we will provide, be providing meals for all, any child under the age of eighteen, for free. And we're proud to say that in two thousand twenty-two, we gave out over forty-two thousand breakfast meals and over forty-seven thousand lunches. So it's really a program that's needed, I want to thank, you know, person to person, filling in the blanks, Chartwell, and all the other, there's about thirteen local providers that we want to thank for being a part of this. Then we have next, Connecticut Summer at the Museum is back. Participating in Norwalk, Norwalk Historical Society, Norwalk Seaport Association, Stepping Stones Museum for Children, and the Maritime Aquarium, there are over a hundred and twenty museums around the state of Connecticut that children under the age of eight, or eighteen and under, if accompanied by at least one adult, can get into the museums for free. The wonderful opportunity to showcase some of our cultural events and those kinds of things, so we're really pleased that that's back. And last but not least, I think you've all heard it by now, but we're very proud of the fact that Norwalk was listed by Fortune Magazine as the twenty-ninth best place in the country to live and raise a family. They looked at education, they looked at crime, they looked at affordability, they looked at location, and so that's something of which we're all proud, and I think I mentioned it before. Everybody in this room, everybody is serving on boards and commissions, people who work in different parts of the city, and, and the residents who live here, all share in that honor because we all contributed to it. So again, thank you, and I now will turn it over to Council President Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we'll move right into the consent calendar for today. Tuesday, July eleventh, and Councilmember Darlene Young will be reading the consent calendar.
Thank you, Council President Burnett. Seven, A. Two, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute a contract via sole source procurement with Stan Tech Inc. to complete project review, closeout, and requisition request to the Connecticut Department of Transportation for grant reimbursement in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars for the NRVT Phase Two, count numbers noted. Seven, B, one. Authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to AAA Band Rentals LLC for Norwalk High School and Bryan McMahon High School Band Instruments Replacement Project for a total not to exceed two hundred ninety thousand, one hundred ninety-three dollars, count number noted. B, three, technical correction of Common Council action of June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Item seven E two A and two B with account numbers corrected to read as follows. A, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an agreement with Retech LLC for Beldon Avenue Library Literacy Volunteers Office Improvement for a total not to exceed eighty-nine thousand dollars, count number noted. B, three B, authorize the Office of Building Management to issue change orders on the contract for a total not to exceed eight thousand nine hundred dollars, funds available from account numbers noted. And that concludes.
That's the consent calendar, Mr. Burnett?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Young, for the reading of the consent calendar. I'll call for the question, all those in favor of the consent calendar as read? All those opposed have the same right? Any abstentions? The. Because I see Councilmember Kitey's hand is still up, is that for?
I was just voting yes.
Oh, thank you. That, that makes you unanimous on this. So back to you, Mr. Mayor, for the items that are off consent.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett, first item up, the consent calendar is seven A one, Mr. Kites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item A one, authorize Mayor Harry Rilling to execute any and all documentation to ratify and improve the waterfront industrial zone study, I'd like to move that and briefly speak to it if I may.
Yes, Mr. Kitey, on the floor.
Thank you, I mean, I just gotta thank the committee and Steve Kleppin and his crew there, and then Jessica and the ECD department as well, we've done, I think, a great job with keeping in mind how important commercial marine use is, and also how important public access to our waterfront is, so I think we've, we've incorporated and hit the mark on this one, I mean, it's been several years in the making, but I think we finally got to where we need to be. And I believe we have Mr. Kleppin here tonight that will just give us kind of an overview of how this has changed and what we have in front of us this evening.
Sure, and I'll be brief, but please, and any questions at any time, feel free to ask. You may recall a little over last, maybe last year, we went through a process where we amended the Plan of Conservation Development to include recommendations of the, for industrial zones rezoning. We, we were initially going to do the waterfront study as part of that study, but it just became too large to include, and we actually didn't have enough budget to look at it because there were a lot of complexities associated with the waterfront that we didn't anticipate at the beginning. So we came back and got additional funding to look at the waterfront separately, so that was kind of an appendix to that plan. We completed the waterfront study in two thousand twenty-two, I believe it was in September. After that, the Planning and Zoning Commission discussed it, made some recommendations as well. And then we put out a referral to Common Council in November of last year with a similar request to amend the Plan of Conservation Development to include the waterfront study as part of the P O C D. There were several good discussions with council over, I'd say, a four to five month period through the ECD Committee about changes we wanted to see for different areas of the waterfront and specific recommendations, which we incorporated in and have since wrapped that into the draft zoning map that would, you know, line up with what the plan recommends. So the next step is for the Planning and Zoning Commission to conduct a public hearing on the amendment to the P O C D incorporating the waterfront plan. And we'll also have to refer this out to Harbor Management and the Connecticut Deep as well, but wanted to do that after we got through this step to incorporate any comments that council had or recommendations that they had for planning and zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Kleppin. Any questions or comments from any other of the council members or Mr. Kites?
I do have a question.
Mr. Camacho?
Would you mind speaking on some of the, the issues that were raised by the member of the public that spoke at the beginning of the hearing? Can sort of help me understand where their, the comments are accurate or not accurate?
Yeah, so for this particular conversation, I think there were really two areas where there was concern and maybe disagreement. One would be up towards Commerce Street on the upper end of the, up the harbor, and then along Water Street, so what should happen on Water Street? So there was not, I, I wouldn't phrase it as right or wrong, I think just different visions of what the area could and should look like. So there, there really wasn't a wrong answer. I think what we came up with is a compromise proposal, which can allow a, a different mix of uses in there. So for the, for the Water Street area, particularly like the, the northern half, if you cut that area in half now, the idea is for that area to be more in keeping inconsistent with what's happening on Washington Street and occurring just inland from that, with the idea being that we want to have more public access, more of a mixed-use variety, get people to the waterfront, and, and allow those kind of activities where right now, you know, the public's kind of shut off from that. And, and also similarly, that was also expressed for the upper area of Commerce Street, but that area is a little difficult because of the parcel configurations there, the narrowness of the lots, you have the railroad track running right through the middle of some of those properties as well as the road. So they're a little different in the, the nature of why the, the changes and recommendations were made, but, but the same kind of goal for both those areas. If I might diverge for a second, I just wanted to address, I forgot to address Ms. Jones's comments before. At, at no point in time did city staff direct the consultant to ignore flooding or water quality measures or anything of the kind, the, or tell them we are goal to increase density, that was never expressed by city staff to the consultant. I've emailed the consultant to verify that and happy to pass that on to the council and the commission as well.
Thank you, Ms. Kleppin, Ms. Smith.
And if I can add some comments to that, and I think Ms. Shanahan might be helpful as well in terms of the Ad Hoc Sustainability Committee has been putting a lot of effort and studies into stormwater management, and the Public Works Department also is studying, in fact, just a couple of months ago, Public Works, or we, we approved a contract for a company, and I can't think of the name off the top of my head, to begin studying the stormwater issue that we have, so I, I see it as two separate issues.
Ms. Najolski-Eichner?
Thank you very much, Mayor, following up on Ms. Smith's comments, I think it's important to highlight here for anyone who is listening and interested, the South Norwalk Climate Resilience Study that is currently ongoing. There is a public hearing coming up, I apologize, I don't have the date, I'm sorry, a public meeting, not a public hearing. You know, it's an ongoing conversation, I think we are all extremely cognizant of the risks that climate change pose to South Norwalk, to East Norwalk, to Rowayton. This is an enormous and pressing issue, but it is complicated, and I think it's one of those where we are need to do simultaneous long-term planning while also figuring out how to move forward with, you know, residences and businesses and existing waterfront uses. So I think this is an ongoing process, this waterfront study is one piece of a very complex and very long-range set of work we have to do. And I really hope that people who are concerned about climate resilience in South Norwalk and then in the city as a whole, really join in these conversations, I think the conservation staff and the, the planning and zoning staff are really trying to dig into what we can and should and need to do, and it's gonna lead to complex and complicated and expensive questions about stormwater authorities and other measures. But this is the beginning of a conversation, certainly not the end.
Thank you, Mr. Najolski-Eichner, Ms. Shanahan?
Yes, just to follow up, I apologize for coming late to the meeting, I had a family conflict, but, so I'm shooting it in the dark a little bit about Ms. Jones's comments, but the Ad Hoc Sustainability has had a couple of meetings about Stormwater Authority, and some of the different conservation groups in town have also had a subject, a lecture, which the subject was Stormwater Authority. So I think Norwalk is deeply invested in looking at this in a serious way, we went up to New London in November to look at what they're doing up there. So we're really excited to explore this opportunity. And to highlight the meeting that Nora was speaking of, it's going to be held tomorrow, July twelfth at three P M. And if you want to join, you should reach out to Michelle and, and Druski over at Planning and Zoning. She can probably, you know, give you a link if you wanted to watch and listen in on that.
Thank you. And, Mr. Meek?
Yeah, first. Thanks, I'm a big fan of Ms. Jones, but I have a question for council, this, this item's non-binding, correct?
I didn't hear the last part.
This is a, what? Non-binding.
This, this. This study is non-binding.
Yes, just approving the waterfront industrial zone study, it's approving this study.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Ms. Ayers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just have a question about particularly Commerce Street and some residents having about, that's a highly industrial area already. Does this study talk about pollution in that area? Or how we are going to address further pollution in that area? Particularly just the Commerce Street part?
Sure, it, it doesn't discuss pollution specifically, but it talks about the types of uses that are allowed to go on the properties. So the rezoning of that area does reduce the amount of what's currently considered heavy industrial, which would be the, you know, the, the things people would probably have the most objection to in terms of the, the intensity of the activity that could occur there. So the parcels are actually, I would call, I hate to use the term, but a downzoning in some respects in terms of the intensity of things they could do, they would, with the goal for a lot of this would be to technically de-industrialize some of the waterfront and soften it up a little bit, if that answers your question. So the uses, at the end of the day, if the, if the plan vision is realized, would have less of industrial feel and more of a public access to the waterfront feel, more green space along the waterfront, and so forth.
Thank you for that.
Sure. Mr. Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We received a, a few notes with concerns related to brownfields, and I was hoping that Mr. Kleppin could just comment on that, just to give the public his thoughts as it relates to the concerns that were raised on that topic.
Certainly, so that came up several times during the public input phase of, of the plan itself. However, there, the, the existing Connecticut, and I just got my, one of my staff members just about an hour and a half ago sent me the link to the Connecticut Deep site. There are no listed sites with the state in the waterfront study area, there are some in Norwalk, but there are none in that study area. That's not to say that there aren't brownfields on those properties, but usually what triggers that, and I spent the first seven years of my professional life doing phase one and phase two site investigation, so I have a pretty good knowledge base with this, is the Connecticut Transfer Act would trigger the, you know, the property, say some, I'm gonna sell my gasoline station to somebody, and that's gonna trigger an investigation, and that's when the site would, could technically be listed unless there was an obvious violation of some kind of leak or spill or something like that. So that, that it's very possible that there may be brownfields on some of those properties, but there are no listed properties, that's why we didn't include anything there. I think it would be unfair to us to rely on, so backing up a little bit, there was database from the redevelopment agency that was very old, but we could never ascertain whether that data was valid or not, they weren't sure where it came from, and it doesn't match up to what, anything what the Connecticut Deep has today. So we didn't include that specifically because we didn't want to falsely state that there was. state that there was a brownfield on somebody's private property. I think that would be a bad look for us. So we indicated that, that, you know, there may be brownfields there. And what will happen is if any of those properties change hands and if somebody wants to redevelop on one of those sites, they have to go through that investigation process. And if there is contamination there, they have to clean it and address it. That, so that's how the process will, and that's the same with any commercial property in the city.
Great, thank you.
Any further comments or discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor of item 7A1? Please. Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously? Ms. Kites, item 7A3?
Authorize Mayor Harry Rilling to execute an amendment to increase the Fussin' O'Neill contract by $200,000 for additional transportation, engineering, and related design services for the Wall Street corridor improvements. I'll move that item and also briefly speak to it. Yeah, this is just kind of finalized design. I'm sure you've all heard about the Wall Street Corridor Improvements Project. And at the end of the day, we're talking a $15 million project to improve the Wall Street area. This is just the finalized design. And I was recently told that some good news is that it looks like construction will begin in the fall of 2024. So that's, that's good. And hopefully by soon thereafter, we'll really see the results.
Thank you, Mr. Kites. Further, any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Mr. Meek is opposed and carries 13 to 1. 7A4?
Authorize Mayor Harry Rilling to execute amendment to increase the WSP contract by $25,000 for additional design services for Phase 4 Traffic Signal Upgrade Project. I'll move that item and briefly speak to it to say this is, the gist of this is to add two new traffic lights to the Wall Street area and to West Avenue. And the funding is not just for the lights themselves, but also to, to work on the streamlining of traffic in those areas.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Left or right, John? Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention, I'm sorry, one opposed, Mr. Meek? 7A5?
Authorize Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute a three-year lease agreement with Rent at Christmas in the amount not to exceed $138,584, which equals $46,195 per year for the Wall Street and South Norwalk Holiday Extravaganza Christmas Tree Insulation and Maintenance Account Numbers Noted. Move that item as well and speak to it briefly by saying this is for, for Christmas trees both in South Norwalk and in Street for their, for the installation, for the trees themselves, for the storage of the trees, the setup and the maintenance and all that. Trying to, you know, increase Christmas spirit in July.
Thank you. Any further comment or discussion? Ms. Ayers?
I would just like to say, I know last year, no, yeah, last year, we did the extravaganza both in South Norwalk and on Wall Street. And as a mother with a small child who absolutely enjoyed himself. From Santa Claus getting stuck on the side of the building to the camels and the petting zoo and all of the things in between. And these are the little things that make Norwalk very special to our most smallest residents. And so I know this is a technicality that we have to sign contracts in preparation, but a lot of little kids in Norwalk are looking forward to what we're going to do this holiday season. So I just wanted to say.
Ms. Smith?
Can I just add big kids too?
Ms. Smith?
I'm just adding big kids too. Was it just terrific events last year? Next year.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, who's against Christmas trees? I just, I pulled this off consent because I wanted to highlight it as a fact that if, if this city can pay almost $50,000 a year on Christmas trees, we can certainly afford a library parking lot. I'll vote yes for this. But I wanted to just bring it up in that context. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Kites?
Authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute a one-year contract with Star, Inc., Light the Way, with four options to extend the term for one period of one year each in the amount not to exceed $13,000 per year for litter cleanup services within the Wall Street Business District via sole procurement. Count number noted. I'd like to move that item and briefly speak to it by saying the gist of this is that to, to hire those, those perhaps with disabilities from Star, Inc., you probably all know Star, Inc., a great nonprofit organization here in Norwalk that does great things for, and that's to hire three people for three hours a day for three days a week to help a litter cleanup around the city.
Thank you, Mr. Kites. Further comment? Ms. Val Young?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really excited to start up again. If you can recall, years ago, with Clean and Green under the leadership of Dave Shockley and the Regency Initiative, we had several Star residents who did just this. And, you know, when things come and go because of funding, you know, things happen. But I'm very excited to see that this is back and I think it's a win-win for the city.
Thank you. Further comment? Mr. Hoover?
I just think this is a fantastic thing. The work that Star does is an absolute asset to this city and an asset to the community that they serve. And I'm glad to see that we're moving toward the contract of this nature.
Further comment? I will just add that when you see them and we have a pizza party for them at the end of the season and they're just so excited and they're very proud of the work that they do and they really do good work. So it's, it's a win-win situation. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Underland Use and Building Management Items 2A and B. Authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an agreement with Reliable Excavating Company, Inc. for the Norwalk Concert Hall Terrace and Stairs Improvement Project, a total not to exceed $148,000. Funds available from account number noted. And 2B, authorize the Office of Building Management to issue change orders on the contract for total not to exceed $14,800. Account numbers noted. I would like to move that, those items and speak briefly. The terrace and the stairs are in a bit of disrepair. And this is a project that will improve both the terrace and the stairs, increasing safety around that. You know, we, I know we do the annual tree lighting there and a lot of people go up on that terrace and, and I think that it deserves some freshening.
Thank you. Further comment or discussion, Mr. Meek?
Yeah, thanks. No doubt it warrant some repairs. The construction management team wasn't sure where ADA responsibilities laid with that. So it seems a little bit premature to just throw $150,000 into a small sidewalk without having the full scope of the project in front of us. So I have to vote no on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? All in favor, but Mr. Meek is opposed? And I believe that's the last item. I just had, I was a little remiss. I did not congratulate Mr. Allen for his reappointment and thank you for serving. Mr. Revolus?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor? Opposed? I'm sorry, Ms. Juszczyk Eichner, did I see your hand?
Yes, I'm certainly in favor.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, the council, for another fine meeting.
Good night.